Thanks for coming. It's it is my pleasure to call to order tonight's regular town council meeting of the town of Tiburon. It is Wednesday, September sixth, and Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll to start us off, I'd appreciate that.
Councilmember Thier.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wallner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
And Mayor Ryan.
Here, thank you. So we're all here. To start off the meeting, we'll begin with oral communications, and these are for people wishing to address the town council on subjects that are not on tonight's agenda. So please note, though, however, that we're not able to take on any discussions or take any action on what you discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. And then, as has been our process with the hybrid meetings that we have, we'll have people in the in the chambers speak first, and then we'll go to people online. So is there, do you want to offer instructions?
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your web on our controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I'll invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using your phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Great, thank you. So at this time, is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to speak to us for three minutes? It's called Douglas, thank you.
Yes.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Mrs Pamela McConnell Douglas, and this is my darling husband Steve Douglas. And I'm here to address the council. Well, today would have been is one of my saddest days of my life. There's two. My son was twenty five years old when he was murdered in San Francisco. I'm still dealing with that. My surrogate father of fifty five years stayed near valley died recently. So it's too much. And I have lived in Tiburon for over fifty five years. And for some reason, I have been targeted. My family has been targeted, especially my son as a biracial young man. He was harassed when he was three years old with a knock on my door from the Tiburon Police Department. They said that he drew a swastika. I don't know what it is, but they blamed it on my three year old. And I said that you were making a great mistake. And ever since age of three to twenty five, the police has destroyed my family. But I had to endure the lies, the treatment, and on and on and on. Will it ever stop? My son is not here anymore. Stop the harassment. And in town, I have applied for many of the jobs. No one will hire me. I'm fifty five, I'm sorry, I'm seventy five years old. My master, I graduated from Tempe High School. My master's from the University of Hawaii. And I'm one of the poorest individuals in Tiburon, but there, people see me as different. But I'm poor. No one will hire me. A couple months ago, our car exploded on the freeway and we looked in the car, you know? My husband kept very proud of that. I mean, I want the torture to stop, please, please. Oh, yeah, they were volunteers. But why can't someone hire me? I I know that there's a policy in Tiburon, where they would not let people of color buy homes in Belvedere, Tiburon. Why can't some of them change their policies? I'm extremely international. I love all. You know, my darling husband is about to, I just want peace. I still have not buried my son. That's just, you know, I can't do it. I can't.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you for sharing. Is there anyone else in chambers who'd like to speak to us about an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Go ahead, please. So just just state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
Um, my name's Teresa Coleman. And my husband and I have lived in Tiburon for twenty three years. We raised our two daughters here. And about four weeks ago, our home was broken into. And we live in the Reedlands. And about three weeks prior to that, our neighbor's home was broken into in the cul-de-sac, just about maybe six homes down. And we also heard about another home the same night. Our home was broken into a home behind Delmar School was broken into. And then when I called Dado Glass to get new glass for my door, they said, my gosh, we're getting so many calls from residents in Tiburon and Belvedere because everyone's door or glass is being broken into. They're not lot, you know, trying to unlock the doors or breaking the glass and walking in so the alarm doesn't go off. So this is our first experience of something like that in twenty three years. And so I would really like to encourage you to think about doing what Sandra Fell is doing, which is putting cameras, license reading cameras in strategic places. You could start with the Reedlands as a test case possibly. And cameras with maybe a sign, you know, next to them so people can see the camera and, you know, whether whatever it says, smile, you're on camera or you're being your photos. I don't know if that's up to you, but something that could possibly be a deterrent. Because I don't know if we're going to find out if these robberies are linked. I don't know. I know there is a commonality between the neighbor down in the cul-de-sac and and our home. We both had a lot of work done on our home. And we don't know if there's a a commonality there with subcontractors. We have no idea. And a lot of our neighbors, a lot of us are doing what we can financially to create more security. But there's also a lot of homes in our neighborhood where people have lived there for forty, fifty years, and they don't really have the resources to put in cameras. And it's it's really expensive. So if there's something the town can do to create a deterrent and just to see if if, because we don't have time to wait for the the perfect thing or to understand exactly why these robberies are going on or what the common denominator is. If there's something we can do in the meantime to make our community safer, that would be really great. And I'm here today with my husband. The family down the street would have come, but they they couldn't make it. And I know some of our neighbors are on Zoom and listening in. And I'm also here today with Lolita Waterman, who's the president of the Reedland Property Owners Association.
So thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to speak?
My name is Lolita Waterman, and I am appearing today in my capacity as president, as the duly elected president of the Regent's Property Owners Association. On the day that the first robbery occurred, a lady police officer came by the house, my house, and asked me if I could help by gathering camera footage from those in the neighborhood. So that's what led me to send out this mass communication to everybody saying, hey, if anybody has some camera footage that can give help to the the police department, please weigh in. So I'm happy to say that there was some success on that on that aspect. The other aspect to my effort was that I received an enormous amount of feedback, mostly your concern and worries from longtime homeowners. And it was interesting that the ones who seemed to be the most shaken by the whole thing were those who were older. And it was not just that they were afraid that this trinket or that trinket would be stolen. They were, it was the psychological impact and the fear of of being deprived of their emotional security. That was very interesting to me. Anyhow, since then, I have had a lot of communications with property owners in the Reedlands as well as members of the police department and Mr. Chaney himself. And I I support the request for the installation of additional, I know we already have some cameras in the town, but I do support the installation of two more. And this is not in any way meant to be to the exclusion of steps that homeowners themselves can take to reinforce their own security, whether it is things that cost money, like installing whatever is motion detectors and cameras and all the rest of it. Or things that are are just common sense and that don't cost money, you know, put in good bolts or whatever. And by no means is this request meant to supplant that or be a substitute for it. But it is generally intended to be in addition to. Because a lot of the people and I have, over the years now, I've gotten to know a lot of them. There are folks who've lived in the Reedlands and in Tiburon forty, fifty, sixty years who are house rich, but cash poor. And when you talk, looking at maybe ten fifteen thousand first in terms of the installation of additional security devices in your home, that's the one time cost. But then there is this ongoing monthly cost, which is beyond the budgetary possibilities of a lot of these folks. So I'm trying to kind of be sensitive to that and understand that as well. But I thought I'd come here today and just give you, share with you the feedback that I have received, and it's, people are feeling very strongly about it. So thank, if you can help in that way. They're only asking two cameras, one at the entrance to the Reedlands and one at the rear of the Reedlands. This would certainly be a step in the right direction. So thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who'd like to make a comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we have anyone online who'd like to?
Yes, we'll start with Pam Bonney.
Hi, councilmembers, can you hear me? Hello, I'm still muted.
We can hear you.
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, so just state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
Yes, Pamela Bonney, and I live at twenty four South Ridge Road West, next door to Teresa Coleman and down the road from Lolita Waterman. And I'm here tonight to encourage you to look at the safety and cameras for the Tiburon overall, and then also the Reedlands specifically because of the incidents that have happened to my two neighbors. So I'm here and supportive of them. And I've lived in Tiburon since nineteen ninety eight, so twenty five years with with my husband, and I've raised two children here as well. And there's kind of three things that I just wanted to highlight for you to consider. And I thank all of you for your service and particularly the Tiburon Police as well, as I know that staffing and so forth is always a challenge and the the types of crimes that are happening. The incidents are getting more and more, you know, sophisticated. But the first suggestion I would like to make is about best practices and looking at what Teresa's already mentioned tonight is what Sam Raffel is doing. But Sam Raffel as well, I mean, sorry, San Francisco as well and Atherton as well. There's a lot of communities that have similar problems and similar types of crimes where you have the drive by casing the house and so forth, and then nine o'clock at night where people would not necessarily think that there was something going on. So there's a lot of things that are happening, and I know resources are always an issue and time is a factor, but I would encourage that would be, you know, best practices and and researching what other towns are doing and collaboration would be something I think that everyone could benefit for. From, secondly, the cameras. A lot of the studies show, I mean, and you can vary on what the rates are, but the cameras themselves provide some deterrent and you know, the numbers from percentage of reduction of crime are, you know, what I've seen online is sort of like fifteen percent of different studies of reduction in crime. And and they've also shown that while violent crime is not reduced, but burglaries and this type of break-ins, the the cameras are a deterrent. Even if the criminals are able to get around it by switching license plates and some of the other anecdotes that we hear that are happening around town. And then finally, I would love to see what the town, the town is doing a lot on safety with the the police and the new commissioners, and I applaud those efforts. But I think we could do more to augment that. And, you know, some of the ideas that what I would suggest would be sort of a coordinated effort with the homeowners associations. And, you know, you, we could have, just like we do with the fire get ready practices, we could also start a campaign and meetings, you know, maybe a couple of times a year to have the police department meet. And I know some of that stuff is already done, and thank you for doing that. But I think we just need to do more so that people are aware. And that's it for my time. Thank you.
I'm clerk. Is there anyone else?
Next is Jeff.
Good evening. I'm not sure if you can see me. I'm not actually, so let's see here.
I can hear you, though. Welcome.
Oh, you can. Thank you. Good evening. I'm I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to speak. I'm Jeffrey Channon from.
So if it's something that's not on tonight's agenda, this is the time.
That's the my question for you is, is there going to be an opportunity to address you for three minutes before you go into closed session on the closed session matter?
It will, yes.
Okay, then I I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, and I'll save my comments for later. Thank you.
For later, thanks.
Seeing no additional comments.
Okay, so I'll close the open public comment period. Thank you. Before we get to the rest of the agenda, I just wanted everybody to know that we originally had a public hearing scheduled for this evening, but the two parties have come to a resolution. So there will not be an appeal. That has been dropped, so it will not be discussed tonight. It's stopped from the agenda. So if anyone's here for that, we won't be hearing that item tonight. So at this point, I'd like to move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on the council who'd like to pull an item from tonight's consent calendar? Seeing none, is there, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on any of the consent items beyond what we've already received? On in email?
Seeing none.
Okay, so um, so I accept the motion to prove the consent calendar.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the count consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Great, so that passes four zero. Now we can move on to the action items. We'll start with action item one. That's the fee waiver request. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is for council to consider a request from the Tiburon Fire Protection District for a waiver of all of fees associated with the planned reconstruction of Fire Station Ten, which is located on Paradise Drive. Just a little bit of background about the Tiburon Fire District. As council is aware, the Tiburon Fire District is one of two fire districts that serves Tiburon, the other district being the Southern Marin Fire District. With the staff report, there was an exhibit that showed the respective boundaries of both those fire districts as exhibit one. The Tiburon Fire District includes a portion of Tiburon, but also includes significant portions of an incorporated areas of the Tiburon Peninsula, including Paradise K and numerous residences and open space areas along Paradise Drive. As council probably is aware, the the Fire District currently maintains two fire stations. The first is in the headquarters is downtown here on Tiburon Boulevard. And the second is sort of a satellite station at the intersection of Paradise Drive and Tressel Glen. That's called Fire Station Ten. For about over a year and a half now, the Fire District has been working on a process for planning the complete reconstruction of Fire Station Ten. And on August eighth, we received a letter from the Fire District requesting that the town council consider waiving town fees associated with the project. Council in two thousand and one passed a resolution number thirty one dash two oh one, which established a policy and procedure for considering the waiver of town fees, and that was included in your staff report, I believe, as exhibit two. I won't go through all of the details of that policy. But to summarize, the Tiburon Fire District as a governmental agency is eligible under section four A of that policy. And this evening, council can consider a waiver of up to a hundred percent of the fees, the otherwise applicable fees. Council shall determine the amount of the waiver granted based on a percentage of the project benefit that will be realized by the general public of the town of Tiburon. In terms of financial impacts, representative representatives of the Fire District have indicated that the current estimate for the project is around six million dollars. Based on this cost, a waiver of all applicable fees would be waiving approximately a hundred thirty five thousand dollars in general fund revenue. I would note that any waiver of fees approved by the council only applies to fees imposed pursuant to the schedule of fees adopted by the town council. There are a number of third party fees with any project that would still be passed through to the Fire District as part of this project. That includes consultants to review plans and the like. So for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions, council is considering the request for a fee waiver, determining the amount of the project benefit that benefits the general public and approve a fee waiver equal to the benefit the project provides to the general public up to a hundred percent of the calculated fee or deny the fee waiver request. I'd be happy to answer any questions. One last note, over the years, the Fire District has undertaken a number of projects in Tiburon, and we went back as far as we could, and council has routinely waived the fees for all of those projects.
Great, thank you for that information. Do any of my council members have questions for staff? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
This is the kind of question that staff will just love, but given that any fire is not going to stay within a particular jurisdiction and there is a mutual aid policy, how on earth do we reasonably figure out what portion of benefit to the town is?
That's a great question, and I don't have a great answer. And and perhaps that's, you know, perhaps why council in the past has, you know, chosen to waive the fees. Just assuming that the benefit does accrue one hundred percent to the general public.
Yeah, Councilmember Thier, do you have a question?
I don't know. I don't have a question.
Any question, go ahead, please.
So based on what you said and what I saw on the staff report, when we waive the fees, we still are reimbursed for actual costs to the town. Is that correct?
Correct. So for instance, we routinely would set out a complicated set of plans like this to a third party. Fourleaf is the company we typically use for reviewing building plans. The cost of that review would be passed on to the Fire District. The town would not absorb that cost. It's only the fees we charge for building permit fees, application fees, and our own internal fees.
And those fees in the abstract are to help fund those activities, but there's no direct correlation between what it costs to actually process the application and the fees that we.
I I think there's supposed to be a direct correlation, but but your your statement is correct that the the fees are.
By the hour and.
Right. The fees are meant to cover the, you know, staff costs, staff time for reviewing and inspecting the various inspections that go along with the project.
So the the fees are a percentage of the total project cost. Is that correct on our permits?
There are, there are a number of, when when someone pulls a building permit or submits an application for a development, there are a number of fees. Some are calculated as a percentage of the value of the project. Others are flat fees.
Okay, but the main fee, the big fee is
The largest single fee.
The percentage multiplied by the project cost.
That's right.
So that's how you get to the, well, you get to some portion of that hundred thirty five thousand dollars that they're asking.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that'd like to make a comment on this agenda item? Anyone in the chambers? Seeing none, anyone online that would like to speak to this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period, and I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Thier.
So I just wanted to say that, you know, I do think that we should do this waiver, this fee waiver. You know, our fire department is a government agency. I see an absolute direct benefit to the general public. And I would strongly recommend a one hundred percent waiver of the fees, and I'll make the motion when the time is appropriate.
And I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would just say it's it's hard to actually think of a more important investment that we could make. So it's, I agree with a hundred percent waiver.
I'm usually forgetting revenue from all sources, but in this case, I totally agree.
Okay, so I move that we grant a one hundred percent fee waiver. And yeah, one hundred percent.
And Vice Mayor Fredericks, I'll have your second.
Yes, you do.
All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that approves, passes four zero. Thank you. So at this point, we can move on to action item two, which is the Alta Robles final map. Do we have a staff report on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just give us one moment to get the technology here. Good evening again, mayor, members of the council, members of the public. For tonight, council is considering approval of the final map for the Alta Robles subdivision and development project. We'll repeat this at the end of the presentation. So staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution determining that the final map conforms to Tiburon Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen and the subdivision map act and accepting the offers of open space and public easements associated with this development, including that for parcels A, B, and C, and authorize the town clerk to sign the final map and authorize the town manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement with the applicant. A little bit of background, this shows you a map and hopefully you can see my arrow there. Yep, you can see the approximate boundary of the Alta Robles site here. Give you a perspective, this is where Tressel Glen and Paradise Drive meet. So the fire station we were just talking about is right where my arrow is. And this is Hacienda Drive right here. Little bit of background on the project itself, the property is fifty two acres. There's an existing single family home on the property, which includes tennis court, pool, pond, garden, and landscaped areas and other ancillary improvements. This is called Lot One. The total development is is a total of fourteen residential lots with Lot One being one of those fourteen. So one lot for the existing and thirteen additional lots each for the development of a new single family home. Seventy seven percent of the site would be protected as open space comprised of open space parcels, A, B, and C on the final map and a fifty foot wide public access trail easement, private open space easements, and a natural resource protection and scenic view preservation easement on Lot One. The staff report in the exhibits included a lot of information, including the the actual final map. I think it's a total of sixteen sheets. This gives you a broad overview of the property, and you can see the various lots identified here. And to give you a little perspective, this is Paradise Drive. The proposed main entrance for the subdivision would be here off of Paradise Drive. And to the west, this is Hacienda here, here. And the fifty foot wide public access corridor is this corridor right here at the very edge of the property running parallel to Hacienda. Little bit of background, in terms of timing, back in February two thousand and twelve, the precise development plan for this project was approved by council, and this established the project density, size, design, location, and the height of the homes and mitigation. and mitigation monitoring and reporting program adopted based on the final EIR mitigation measures. In two thousand sixteen, the council approved the vesting tentative map, which established the lot lines for the fourteen single-family detached residential lots. And most recently, in February two thousand twenty, Design Review Board approved certain subdivision improvements, including landscaping, retaining walls, bridge structures, exterior lighting, which were all required as part of the vesting tentative map conditions of approval. Tonight, again, council is considering approval of the final map. The focus of this review is to ensure conformance with the approved precise development plan and the vesting tentative map and the conditions of approval and mitigation measures included in both of those. Town council action on the final map is ministerial in accordance with state law and Tiburon Municipal Code. All conditions and specifications of the approved precise development plan and vesting tentative map continue to be in effect with council's approval tonight. The final map proposes no substantive changes to the project as previously approved by the precise development plan or the vesting tentative map. And the town engineer and community development director have reviewed the final map and supplemental documents, and have determined that all requirements of the subdivision map act and chapter fourteen of the Tiburon Municipal Code have been met, including the Alta Robles Precise Development Plan and vesting tentative map conditions of approval and adopted mitigation measures. Again, tonight, we're asking council to adopt a resolution determining that the final map conforms with Tiburon Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, and the subdivision map act, and accepting the offers of open space and public easements associated with this development, including that for parcels A, B, and C, and authorizing the town clerk to sign the final map and the town manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement with the applicant. I know there are representatives of the property owners here in the room. We have the town engineer available for any questions via Zoom, and we have the Jenny Alsup who worked with with staff on this project for us here in the room, as well as Dina Tassini, and I believe David Ishew is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions for staff? Please, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
You know, just just a clarification, most of us think we know what ministerial actually means. But can you define it for us, how it differs from another hearing or action item?
Yes, I'll handle that question. So ministerial action means what your function tonight is to look at all the adopted conditions of approval on the vesting tentative map and make sure they're accurately reflected in the final subdivision map and subdivision improvement agreement. The council doesn't have discretion to impose new conditions on the final map.
Thank you. So so as I understand it, we're we're just overturning that what we have before us is consistent with the previous actions.
Correct.
Thank you. Other councilmembers here, yes?
Yes. I had a question. So as as part of that vote, are we considering improvements to the new Raven Trail?
The construction of the trail that runs along, that runs parallel to Hacienda Drive was a condition of approval, both in the precise development plan that was approved in two thousand twelve, as well as the vesting tentative map that was approved in two thousand sixteen. So yes, there, those conditions of approval have not been changed.
Can you give me those dates again, twenty twenty-two?
I'm sorry.
The dates of approval?
The precise development plan was approved in February of two thousand twelve, and the vesting tentative map was approved in March of two thousand sixteen, I believe.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
And and just a clarification, will there be an opportunity for public input if and when the improvements to this trail are actually considered when the project goes forward?
Again, the requirement to construct the trail is a condition of approval of the map, so the property owners are, they have to construct it, construct the trail as as part of the approval for the project. So there's really not another opportunity for input on that particular element of it, the construction of the trail.
So I guess what I'm asking is, there might be alternative ways to deal with that trail. Is that something when the project goes forward that will actually come to the council to look at the alternatives that there are any and get public input?
Not specifically related to the fifty-foot corridor easement that's located on the Alta Robles property.
Yeah, I guess my next question would be, based on that answer, is there, you know, I've understood here tonight that our action is ministerial, which means that we don't really have a choice. And I always joke, I say, why are we here if we don't have a choice? But there's a, you know, parts of the law that, you know, nobody really understands why they were written. But anyway, I guess the question's for our town attorney is, is there a way that we can approve this, but also, you know, allow at a later date when the town starts looking at construction to give the neighbors an opportunity to speak about these improvements? Or this easement?
So tonight before you is to approve the final map and accept the easement. Assuming you make those actions, the next the process for proceeding for construction will be for the property owner to build all the improvements under the approved vesting tentative map and the conditions of approval, which include building the the trail on their property, which they will later dedicate those improvements to the town that will accept when they're done with the construction. There's another component of the trail that you may be referencing on Hacienda, where we have a public easement or access easement. And if we are going to do construction of a trail that needs to be done to link the current property to that easement area, that would come before the council as to how to control and what you'd want to do on that property to link the trail. But the portion of construction on the Raven property and what that looks like, that's up to the property owner under their adopted vested tentative map.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone who'd like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Elaine Sorrell. The Rabine Property Plan includes an easement that the town apparently intends to use as a conduit to open up a private, narrow, dead-end segment of Hacienda Drive to public use. The biggest problem with this plan is that the town formed this plan with no legal access to Hacienda Drive from the Rabine property. The proposed easement over the Rabine property runs right into private residential property. In fact, creation of a public trail over this easement would necessarily invite trespass over at least two private residential properties and create nuisance conditions disrupting the residents' right to quiet enjoyment of their homes. So we oppose any improvements or construction on the proposed Rabine Alta Robles Trail. The landslide that occurred in front of one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine Hacienda Drive makes the town's public access easement unusable at this time. To avoid any public confusion or misunderstandings regarding the new trail, it should not be available for use prematurely, which is why we oppose work. That's why we oppose work on the trail at this time. So if the town believes that these significant problems can somehow be overcome, there are still plenty of other issues that make connecting the Rabine easement to Hacienda Drive a bad idea. Hacienda Drive is a private, narrow, dead-end street. There's constant conflict between pedestrians, dogs, bikes, and vehicles on our private, narrow road with no sidewalks, no parking, and no traffic enforcement by the town of Tiburon. This is problematic at best and unsafe at worst. And these conflicts have gotten worse over the last few years with huge increases in daily deliveries from UPS, Amazon, Federal Express, DoorDash, and it goes on on Grubhub and others. Additionally, the proposed trailhead on Hacienda is inconsistent with the three other trailheads that already access the Middle Ridge Open Space. Those three trailheads are served by wide city streets, providing easy access for vehicles and pedestrians where cars can park and vehicle codes can be enforced. But a new trailhead on Hacienda will not have any of those requirements. In fact, opening and connecting the Tiburon Ridge Trail will result in adverse impacts on parking, circulation, privacy, enjoyment of property, property values, and most importantly, public safety, especially for the pedestrians that are forced to share a narrow road with lots of traffic. So again, we strongly oppose any improvements or construction on the proposed Rabine Alta Robles Trail. And we also strongly oppose connecting the proposed trail to the private portion of Hacienda Drive that will result in all of the adverse impacts that we have already mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrell. Are there other members of the public who'd like to speak tonight? Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. My name is Bruce King, and I live on Hacienda Drive. I find this format trying to say as much as you can within three minutes without any expectation of response difficult. But tonight, you have either heard from one of our homeowners or read from other Hacienda residents regarding legal issues surrounding connecting Hacienda Drive to the Tiburon Ridge Trail, which includes the construction of the trail on the Raven Alta Robles property. However, I believe more importantly, you have heard or read about numerous comments and concerns regarding the safety and well-being of our private road, not just for our residents, but anyone else who would pass along Hacienda. We don't want to interfere with the construction and improvements of the Alta Robles infrastructure. But unfortunately, untimely construction of the proposed public trail would be a catalyst which would create a whole series of issues. Our goal at this time is to request that you put a hold on the construction and improvements of the trail. In addition, I know that you have protocols, but the residents of Hacienda would appreciate the opportunity to have a meaningful dialogue with you in the appropriate format or forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to speak this evening? Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Scott Hawkstrasser. I'm a land use and environmental planning consultant that's been working on this project for many years. Just like to point out, in two thousand twelve, when the map or when the precise plan was approved, there was a trail easement proposed at that time. There were many public hearings and an environmental impact report that was done for the project. In two thousand sixteen, when the vesting tentative map was approved, there were also several public hearings and lots of discussion about all elements of the project, including this trail. What wasn't emphasized here is what's important to understand is previous year council approved both of those actions, including the access easement, including the trail. And then your Design Review Board in two thousand twenty approved a very specific design for the trail for the improvements for that, and that was also in a public hearing. So there's been a lot of debate, a lot of discussion, and a lot of decision made about this trail. But there are two possible options. I heard a couple of council members ask questions about, well, can we do something to have the public involved? If you look carefully at the precise development plan condition twenty-seven and the vesting tentative map condition, it has a provision whereby the town engineer could make a determination that the town wants to take over the construction of the trail and that we could make A, an easement, and B, a financial contribution to the future trail development. And if your engineer accepted that, and we do have a proposed fee for that in our subdivision improvement agreement, because we have to build that that plan. If your engineer was to accept that, that as a cash contribution, then the town could, at some later date, proceed with some conversation or dialogue with the neighbors as they've asked for. The other option you have, of course, is just to deny or not accept the easement that's proposed at this time. So those are a couple of options that you have at your disposal, and it's not, it's not our proposal necessarily. We're trying to comply, and I think your staff's indicated that the application for the final map absolutely complies with all the conditions of approval established by previous councils and in your Design Review Board. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. We have our whole team here, and we're prepared to address whatever concerns you have.
Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in chambers who'd like to speak? Seeing, is there anybody online who'd like to speak?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period, and now I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Vice Mayor Fredericks, when it starts off?
So what we're doing tonight is simply a ministerial action. I would like to make the motion if no one else has comments. And seeing none, I would move at the final subdivision map. A finding that it conforms to the municipal code, the subdivision map act, also to accept open space and easements and approve the subdivision improvement agreement, authorize the clerk to sign the map and the town manager to execute the subdivision agreement. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or a second for the motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, so all in favor of approving the motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes four zero. Thank you. And at this point, we can move on to discussion item one, which is about town council rules and protocols. Do we have a staff report on this?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Many Marin cities and towns have adopted rules and protocols manuals specifically dedicated towards the operations of their elected bodies. These types of manuals often include some introductory context about the role and powers of a city council, but they can also get as detailed as things like agenda preparation. In two thousand twenty-two, the council reviewed a couple of examples of the rules and protocols documents of other Marin cities, and they agreed that Mayor Ryan and Vice Mayor Fredericks would work together to develop a Tiburon manual for the council's consideration. So that draft is coming before you tonight for review. This is a discussion item, so we're just looking for any feedback you'd like to offer on next steps with the draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Well, I I would actually like to see this come back when the full council's here. We've just elected a new member. So I would like to put off a discussion until we have a full council.
We can bend him to our will.
Well, I just, I don't know. I just, I also, you know.
Adopt them before he gets here.
Yeah, I mean, I did look at it, and I do think it it's it's a good, you know, it's a good start, but it needs some work to tailor it to Tiburon, and you know, I just think we've got someone elected who's not here. I'd like to see him participate in this as well. So I'd like to continue it until the next meeting when he's seated.
So so let me make.
And I so move.
This was based on the.
Is your microphone on, Councilmember Fredericks? Just checking.
I thought Lee was telling me she's deaf. Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment that that we took the Ross policy documents as a starter, and we involve some existing policy documents of the town, so it is it is particularized to the town. I would also like to comment that I think this would be a wonderful guide for a brand-new council member, which is what it is intended to be. I I am sure that anybody would have valuable input. But I would like to see this on the table when we have new board members and new council members and would prefer not to defer.
So
There is a motion on the floor.
Well, so this is just for questions. We haven't had a public comment period yet. So can we
Okay.
do that first?
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions for staff before I take public comment? Okay, so at this time, is there anybody in chambers? I don't think, but anyone at all who would like to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
Okay. So then I will close public commentary and bring it back for discussion. Thanks.
So I, I, I would like to make a motion that we postpone this until the new council member is seated, which would also give more time to tailor this to Tiburon specifically.
I would like to make a substitute motion.
This is on for discussion, so we're not having motions tonight. That's, I just want to cut that off.
Then Alice and I don't have to do point, counterpoint, right, Alice?
We do not.
We can calm down.
And it's too bad because it's so much fun.
So then
And I have a snack for you, so.
So the only other point I'd like to make is that irrespective of what we discuss here, there's no action being taken, as we just heard. So it will come back to whoever is sitting in the seat eventually, and they may have had one fewer period of review, but it doesn't mean they can't review and architect changes to it. So to the extent that we have anything to discuss, it would be, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do it now.
Yeah, no, just with respect to the consideration of the, of the new council member. Is it, since we have already had it on the agenda, is it possible that we can hand it to him before his first meeting so he can have a lot of time to consider it and ask questions?
Can we do that?
I would just say it's a public document. It was an exhibit to a staff report, so it's available for anybody to look at.
I did, I did want to make, make a comment. I did think that, you know, Appendix A, the newly appointed official information and orientation was actually very good, Councilmember Fredericks. And I think having a document like that when someone's starting is, is very, very beneficial. Because it contains a lot of things that, you know, when I started, I had to just learn by doing. And so I, I just wanted to commend you on that. And yeah, I'll have more comments. They're just minor things that, you know, some things that just don't match Tiburon, so I'll make those comments. Yeah.
I, I would like to just make an ancillary comment, especially for the benefit of, of the new council member that some of us before, I actually, some of us saw the documents because we asked about it, but there is also a lot of resources at the League of California Cities, both on their website and at their meetings. And I hope that in the future, we make new council members aware of that resource. It's an important one.
Yeah. You know, there is a League of California Cities meeting in, on September 20th, which conflicts with our council meeting. So I'm hopeful in future years, we can switch our council meeting just that month, because I do think, I'm not sure, Alice, is that the new mayors and council members meeting?
No, I think the one you're talking about is the
January.
It's a full conference.
Right.
And there were some problems this year getting hotel rooms and things like that.
Yeah.
So that was not the only thing that was a constraint. But yes, I think you're right. We should look at where the meetings are. And, and I must tell you that I did complain about that.
Oh, good.
And even though I've been in government for 20 years, nobody seemed to care.
Yeah, well, nobody cares. Yes, okay.
And so if she does, to the extent that Councilmember Thier has suggested edits, is there a way to circulate those ahead of the next meeting? Is that? Or is it just something she'll have to bring to the next meeting?
She can give those to the clerk. She can't provide them to the committee, otherwise that would be a Brown Act violation, but she can definitely present them to staff and we can put those as part of the packet.
Okay, thanks.
And in this discussion area, discussion item, can't we hear them tonight?
I, I mean, I could share some of them with you. I don't, I don't have all of them, but I think there was a reference, let me see what page that was. I think to, to a treasurer and we just don't, we just don't have one. You know, as I said, Councilmember Fredericks, these are pretty minor things that, that just don't match up. And there's probably a few. You know, there might be a few other things that, that I see. You know, in between meetings, but I don't believe we have a treasurer.
Well, that's an interesting point. We don't have a treasurer anymore. We used to have a treasurer.
Yeah, yeah.
We certainly do have a treasurer. We just don't have a, an elected treasurer anymore. When we do bond issuances, we normally have to refer our finance director as our treasurer. But statutorily, every city needs to have a treasurer. Traditionally, some cities had it as an elected body. And now we have it as a designated employee of the town.
But there used to be a person who did not occupy an office in the town every day who was our treasurer.
Might have been before my time. Since I've been here, we've had a staff member as the treasurer.
Yeah, and that's fairly consistent with other Marin.
It's just little things like that. I mean, I don't, yeah. And, and I, I can provide anything further to the, to the clerk and I'm happy to. Oh, I can't copy anybody. Okay, well, you'll find out next month. Or whenever the mayor decides to put it on the agenda.
And what about, I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, but did anyone notice anything that was glaringly omitted in terms of something big of substance, or was there a direction we went that was counter to where you think things should have been architected, or is it just more?
Well, I sat down to start going through it and decided that I was going to need to be more lawyerly about it, plot a pen and think about it. So I'll have comments for the next go around, but
Fair enough.
I don't have anything detailed enough right now.
Okay, no, fair enough. Okay, so I guess we don't have a whole lot of direction to give you at this point, but we will, we'll bring it back at a subsequent meeting for approval, if that's reasonable.
Yeah, and looking, looking forward to some feedback. We've been grinding on this for
I think I would love for it to come for discussion again, because I don't feel like we really did that tonight, if that's okay. I feel like we just kind of
Okay, I, I must say that I don't think there's anything new in it.
Yeah, I mean, if
No huge, no policy changes, no. Right? It reflects prior documents, practices that were never included before. But, but yes, I think we need everybody to be comfortable with it.
Okay. Any further direction you need or can we move on? Okay, so we'll close that item and we'll move on to council reports. Does anyone have any council reports? I have one thing to mention is that the ad hoc committee that was assigned, that was Vice Mayor Fredericks and myself to investigate pickleball possibilities is honing in on a potential trial. We need a few more pieces of information to secure it, but you can expect to see that on the agenda soon.
Outstanding.
Yes.
John is very excited by that.
Our efforts to take over Belvedere were unsuccessful. But we have, come up with a Plan B that you will see. Is there any town manager report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to move into a closed session. And before we go into closed session, I want to find out if there's any public comment on the closed session. Jeff Channon.
Jeff is first.
Okay, great.
On my audio and start my video. Good evening. Sorry for the delay and I'm Jeff Channon from Old Landing Road. And I submitted to you as what is late mail number one, a pretty lengthy comment by email. I hope you've had time to review it because it's pretty important. It addresses important misinformation that the Planning Commission was given on August 23. That might well affect your own decisions tonight as regards your plans for amending the housing element in the general plan, which will in turn, of course, affect the prospects for resolving the lawsuit brought by the, the committee. The designation of Site H for 93 units in the housing element and general plan and then the lawsuit itself. If, if they continue, then the lawsuit will continue until the requested relief to set aside the general plan is granted or denied. But there are good avenues to resolve this. And the problem is, of course, that disputes and lawsuits don't get resolved without honest dialogue. And they don't get resolved with no dialogue. And we haven't really been having that. It, this process of public comment and three-minute comments doesn't lend itself to back and forth. Staff speaking after public comment is over with no opportunity for anybody to address what they say or for rebuttal doesn't add to that either. The instances of misinformation that I described in my comment are not honest dialogue. They're biased to achieve only one outcome. And evasive and unsupportable answers by town staff and consultants to direct questions from the Planning Commission or even from HCD relating to the suitability and developability of Site H or on issues relating to its environmental constraints or its fire flow capacity and deliberate ignorance of known facts. That also does not serve the town's interests and it's not going to resolve the lawsuit. So I'm, my comment in addition to what I have written, which I hope you will read it if you haven't already, at least for the September 20 meeting, is that I would like to invite you to engage with me about solutions to resolving this lawsuit and the issues that have led to it. I did extend an invitation or a suggestion that one of you attend the settlement conference that we had, but no one did. I'm still willing to meet with any of you at your convenience to discuss in confidence, in the presence of the town's attorneys, if you wish, or on any other conditions, how we might get to resolution. And if you'd like to speak with me tonight as a guest during your closed session, I'd be happy to come down to City Hall and meet with you then. But let's, let's have some dialogue and not just be at odds all the time about this because we all live in this town and we all want a good solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Is there anyone else, any other members of the public would like to speak on the closed session items?
Seeing none.
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close the call, the public comment period, and we will adjourn to closed session and we will come back when we're done and report on our. On our, as the actually. Okay.
Patience everyone, we're out of closed session and I just wanted to announce no reportable action was taken. And with that the meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone. Goodnight.